recorded budget presentation. Now we're going to begin the live session of the public hearing. And we will have some time for clarifying questions on the budget presentation before we jump into public comments. I'm joined here. My name's Emily Byrd. I work in the Clean Water Initiative Program. My colleague Gianna Petito and our Clean Water Board Chair Doug Hardum and Michelle Boompower from Vermont Agency of Transportation. Is there anything else you'd like? Do you want to do a full agenda overview?
Um, no, I don't have a printed one in front of me. So the agenda overview, but welcome everyone. I want to make sure we have enough time for the public comment. So I won't belabor that. We'll just get into it.
So if folks have any clarifying questions on the budget presentation and you'd like to use the raise hand function in Teams, we have about five minutes or so reserved for clarifying questions to the extent that they are factual questions to clarify the contents of the budget. And then we'll just be careful to reserve any comments for the public comment portion of the agenda. And I see that we have a hand raised.
Yeah, hi, it's Arnie Arnison. I have residence in Fairleigh on Lake Maury. You'd mentioned that there was approximately $10.9 million that was going to be carried over to the 2023 and 2024 bud- budgets. It was a 2024 and 2025. Just wanted to be sure because I think it was carried over from 23 to 24 and 25 approximately.
Yes, at the close of the prior state fiscal year 2022, there is $10.8 million of unallocated, unreserved clean water funds. And we are proposing to allocate those dollars across this state fiscal year 2024 proposed budget and the state fiscal year 2025 proposed budget, essentially spreading it out across two years to help to diffuse the impact of the anticipated budget contraction that that we're projecting for next year.
Right, so, so is any of that money potentially available, if necessary, to go to something that could occur in the 2022, 2023 year?
The state fiscal year 2022 was, has, has closed out. We are currently in state fiscal year 2023. There is a process in state government where the budget needs to go through legislative approval. So we've already gone through the state fiscal year 2023 budget and any changes to that would require action by the legislature. So at this point, we are, we pretty much have the state fiscal year 2023 budget set in stone and we are working to implement that. And, and we have the ability to work and make a recommendation to the legislature on state fiscal year 2024 budget, which is the, the budget we are reviewing here today.
Right, subsequent to follow up, is it possible to utilize some of those funds that are allocated for the 2024 year in 2023, but haven't come from the 2024 budget? Being spent earlier, spent, spent within the prior year, but coming from the subsequent year's budget?
Unfortunately, we do not have that capability without the legislature giving us the spending authority. So it will need to be going through, any additional appropriations will need to be following the current budget process that we are discussing today.
Okay.
Thank you for your question, Arnie. I see there's another hand, Martha Feltes.
I have a question regarding line 4.1 on the Lakes in Crisis Fund. I know in previous years that fund has been at $50,000 and I notice it's now at 120. And in the description we just heard of the specific items, I didn't really hear an understanding of why we need the 120 as opposed to the 50. Can you explain what the plans are, please?
Sure, the state fiscal year 2024 proposes for the lake in crisis funds to cover the costs of monit- water quality monitoring and the air raider operations for Lake Carmine. And so this budget line item, the $120,000 is based on the projected cost that needed to support those activities.
So in other words, the actual monitoring and the operation of the air rating system has, is what has increased that cost, that costs expenditure?
Yes, that is the basis of the, the increase to $120,000.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Okay, we have time for just one more question before we move into public comment. Not seeing any hands. Thank you for those questions. Those are really great questions. So now we're moving into the public comment portion of the agenda. Today's public hearing is one of the ways that you can participate and provide public comment in this budget process. Before we dive in, I'll also just note that we have an online questionnaire that's available that you could also complete or we'll be, we can also accept written comments if you'd like to submit those. Those comments are due by November 22nd at 4:00 PM. And we really appreciate everybody taking the time to join us today to share your input on, on the draft budget. So we're going to set up approximately a two minute timer for each commenter, just to ensure that all folks who would like to comment have a chance to do so. So we'll be doing our best to, to keep track of time. And please forgive us if we end up needing to interrupt. We just want to make sure everybody has a chance to voice their piece. Okay, and we have a list of folks who have signed up ahead of time through our RSVP online form. First up is Peter Berger. Apologies if I mispronounced your last name, Peter.
Thank you, it's, it's Peter Berger from the town of Fairleigh. And I think the, the comment and I'm hearing Carmine described as a lake in crisis and, and during the summer and fall, September period of this past year, Maury was, had a significant cyanobloom. And I'm not sure whether it's, you know, the availability of monies for a feasibility study or how we would proceed to, you know, enter into that category. It's, you know, the, at this point, the impact of the cyanobloom on, on Lake Maury is significant. And I think the town is working hard with the Lake Association and, you know, the community to, to try and figure out how to, how to access the, you know, the process. And, you know, we've had Oliver Pearson and Mark Mitchell from Lakes and Ponds down. And, and so I think that that's our concern is that it seems to be, you know, that Maury's being overlooked in this, in this process and, you know, being put off for, for a couple of years in the budget season when we need to access it, you know, as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berger. Appreciate your comments. I should have mentioned that we will be recording all comments and putting together a responsiveness summary at the close of the public comment period, and we'll be sure to respond to folks' comments as part of that process. Next up on our list of public comment is Albert Perry. Hi, Albert, if you can just unmute yourself. Thank you.
How's that?
That's great, thanks.
Yes, good, good morning, everyone. Albert Perry, I, a resident of Middlebury and a longtime summer resident of Lake Carmine in Franklin, Vermont. I want to thank the board and all, everyone who put this review together. It's obviously very comprehensive and complex. And frankly, for someone who's not directly involved in the budgeting process, a little daunting. With that said, my, my questions have to do with not the budget itself so much as the process for implementing what's in the budget. I, I'm struck by the importance of the Clean Water Board's responsibilities to quote, restore, maintain, and improve the waters of the state. What a, what a tremendous task responsibility. And, and only recent years have, have that been put in the statute. And I think it's so, just a wonderful step forward. My, my, one of my questions is regarding Lake Carmine in particular, a lake in crisis. Is, is there, we know there's a crisis response plan, but from the, from the Clean Water Board's point of view, is there any, do you have any special focus or summary of what the plan is for restoring Lake Carmine? And is, is there a way of following that plan, not just this year, but through the years until the restoration is achieved? I know that's a significant question. I think it's important. Really grateful that you all on the board are, are there and have this, have this function. Just like to add on a personal note, I've been enjoying Lake Carmine since I was a child. And, and now I'm, my objective is to see whatever can be done. My children can enjoy it, but my grandchildren can enjoy it. The last several years have not been encouraging. Decades ago, in the 50s and 60s, we had cyanobacteria blooms, blue green algae blooms. Just about every year, they were, I would say commonplace and expected, but compared with today, quite short-lived and much, much less significant in terms of amount and duration. So I will close by saying, thank you for what you're doing. I would like to ask, if possible, could there be a summary of this proposed budget as it applies to Lake Carmine, or lake in crisis, provided before the end of the public commentary period? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Albert Perry. Appreciate your comment. Okay, next up is Bruce Dergan. I hope I pronounced your name correctly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Bruce Dergan and I'm representing Lake Maury in Fairleigh, Vermont. It's a lake that's very near and dear to me personally for 60-year family relationship with Lake Maury. And in the last 15 to 20 years, I've been very active with the Lake Maury Protective Association, the Lake Maury Foundation, and the Lake Maury Commission, all of which focus on water quality. And we are, as has been referenced by our fellow select board member, Peter Berger, definitely a lake that's in crisis at this point. And we're grasping at straws to figure out how we're going to go from a lake in crisis back to a lake that has been pristine over the last X number of years. We've got a lot of dedication to the lake through Lake Monitoring Program, Greeter Program, and all of the other basic tools that other lakes have as well. But at this point, we are really making an outcry to the state to see where we can get some money to fund, first of all, a feasibility study, and then, second of all, the alum treatment that follows. And, excuse me, I've done a lot of research in terms of other alum treatments and as everyone is aware, one was completed on our lake in 1986, was very successful, we're in year 36 of that, where the expected life on these programs are more in the 20 to 25 range. So it's now time to renew the alum treatment is the, is the leaning that Lakes and Ponds through the good work of Oliver and his folks. But we're just making outcry for getting the ball rolling on, first of all, the first step, the feasibility study. And then, second of all, to help us with the implementation of that plan. We have a dedicated team, local, that's very, very dedicated and longstanding roots in the lake to assist in any way that we can. But at this point, we are standing with, with our palms raised upward to the sky, looking for financial assistance and certainly hearing the depth and structure of the Clean Water Board and the money that they have available. We would like to tap into that and get the ball rolling to meet your objectives of clean water in the state and our local objective of the state. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bruce. Appreciate your comment. Next up is Greg Allen. Greg, if you can unmute.
Good morning, everybody. First off, thank you very much to the Clean Water Board for making this opportunity for us to make some commentary. It's really a cool venue, so thank you very much again. You've already heard from three folks from Lake Maury, so you get the sense that we have had some significant cyanobacteria blooms this summer. I represent the Lake Maury Commission, which is a group of five folks that report directly to the Board of Selectmen. And we have a lot of responsibilities regarding milfoil, et cetera, et cetera. But this year, we spent a great deal of time and angst trying to answer questions regarding cyanobacteria. The, the Lakes and Ponds folks have basically pointed us in the direction that, of having internal phosphorus loading. We don't have any external phosphorus that is of significance in this scenario right now. And my appeal, like as Bruce and Peter has mentioned to you, is to somehow find some funds to assist us, please, with the feasibility study that will be required by, by the ANC for us to get the chemical or some type of a permit for remediation. So I thank you again very much and have a great day.
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate your comment. Next up is Ernest Angelhard.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My wife and I have had a camp on Lake Carmine since 1991. Actually, we've been enjoying the lake since about 1980. I just wanted to make a few points. I noted, I note that in the plan, innovation is, is listed in tier two rather than tier one. I would strongly suggest that innovation be included in tier one, if at all possible. Innovations to reduce phosphorus and other pollutants that are coming into not only Lake Carmine, but these affect all of the lakes and the streams in the state of Vermont. In the long term, I think as much money as possible should go toward innovation, innovative Dredging is not innovative, this is in particular for Lake Carmine along the shoreline where there are weeds, but in particular at the outlet going into a small reservoir below that, there used to be a time when there were two four-foot diameter culverts in there. And in the spring and, and in the summer, when we had water event, heavy rain events, you could visibly see the surface water pouring through those, figuring out the lake, particularly what was in the surface. In particular, in 2017, I would, I would strongly suggest that be some, that we take a look at the outlet below, just below the lake. It's almost now clogged with phragmities and other very strong weeds, so that the flow out of Lake Carmine is extremely slow, if at all. We support the alum treatment and are very happy that there are funds available to support a Lake Carmine alum feasibility study. I hope that that study works well and that it could also apply to Lake Maury and other lakes around the state. My last comment relates to improvements made in various areas. There are a lot of percentages of things that are provided to us. And very importantly, Oliver Pearson is, is careful to identify what's estimated and what is actual. At a farm meeting we went to a few weeks ago, someone mentioned that 95% of the improvements come from the Agency of Agriculture. And talking to a few people after the meeting, they felt that that meant that 95% of the phosphorus coming to the lake has been eliminated. While that sounds nice, it's important for all of us to remember that estimates are just that. The lake, the condition of the water in the lake is a reflection of what the situation is in the lake. And as we go forward, I hope we continue to identify actual issues versus estimates. Those are my comments. I want to thank the board very much for all this important work that you folks are doing. Like Al Perry said, it's complex and confusing to a lot of us. And we appreciate the tremendous amount of effort that's been, been made for clean water improvements in the state and at Lake Carmine. Thank you.
Thank you, Arnie. Appreciate your comment. Next up is Edwin Leach, but looking through the list of attendees, I don't see that they are in attendance unless they called in. Edwin, are you with us? If you are on the call-in, you can use star six to unmute. Okay, I don't believe that they were able to make it. Next up is Peter Benevento.
Yeah, Pete, Pete Benevento here. I'm the president of the Lake Carmine Campus Association and vice president of the Franklin Watershed Committee that works to improve the watershed surrounding Lake Carmine. Again, I too would like to thank the board for all your work and for all your attention that you've, you've given to, to Lake Carmine and consideration that you've given to Lake Carmine. We have been designated a, a, a state impaired lake for decades. And we have had a federally approved DM, TMDL since 2009. And then more recently, we have been declared a lake in crisis. So there's, I, I don't think that there's any doubt that we, we need the attention of the Clean Water Board and the funding to help improve our waters. Again, and I mentioned this the other week, we are, we are home to the largest state park in the lake, in the state. We are the fourth largest inland lake in the state. And we have 311 camps surrounding the lake. So there are a lot of people that recreate around Lake Carmine. Again, we appreciate the, the funding that has been designated for the lake in crisis for the last few years. We appreciate the proposed increases and hope they stay in the budget. We also appreciate the, the allocations for the feasibility study for the alum treatment. We, we have never had a treatment, a chemical treatment for blue green algae in Lake Carmine. We've never had a chemical treatment for anything in Lake Carmine. And we appreciate the fact that you are allocating this money for a feasibility study. We also ask that you consider that in the future, that we have an allocation for, for an alum treatment in Lake Carmine if that feasibility study warrants it. Again, on behalf of all the people at Lake Carmine, we thank you for your efforts. And we look forward to the, to the final budget being approved with those allocations for Lake Carmine. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Next up is James Maroney.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm, I'm here to, to comment on the, what I perceive as an ongoing effort by the Clean Water Board and for that matter, by the state of Vermont to ignore the problem, the contribution of, of what you refer to as agriculture. Agriculture is, is not the problem. The, the problem is conventional dairy. And the $50 million seems like a tremendous amount of money, which is being spread all over the, all over the state for, for various and sundry projects. But the, but 45% of the problem could be eliminated or at least cut in half if the state were to ban conventional dairy, conventional farming. The three things that conventional dairy does that impact water quality are the importation of 600,000 tons of grain, the importation of 40,000 tons of fertilizer, artificial fertilizer, and the overstocking of more than one cow for every three acres under management on which that cow's feed is harvested and her manure is spread. These three practices go unmentioned in, in the so-called required agricultural practices rules, and they go unmentioned in, in the, in the so-called clean water budget. I, I have here a, a chart, which I think, I'm hoping you will all recognize. And, and here in the middle, it tells us that, that the, that the lake can, can absorb 500 metric tons of phosphorus, but it's getting over here 817, which is over here 317 too much, 317 of which two-thirds, 66% is attributable to conventional dairy. And so far as I know, the, the TMDL tasked conventional dairy in 2015 with reducing its contribution by 66%. And they've achieved, I think, something like 11. Now, 11% is not nothing, but it's a lot closer to nothing than it is to 66%. And I'm wondering where, if you, if you look at this problem from a, from a bang for the buck point of view, the state could, could cut this, could get, achieve its clean water objectives all over the state, not just in Lake Carmine where the, where the situation is acute, but all over the state. They could achieve that, their, their water quality standards by banning conventional dairy. I'm not talking about dairy per se, I'm not talking about agriculture per se, I'm talking about conventional dairy. And the state has a 60-year history of looking the other way to protect this industry, which by the way, is not feasible, I'm a retired dairy farmer, is not feasible from an economic point of view anyway. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. You're awesome. I was just gonna give you the, the warning on the time. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate your attendance. Next up on the list is Kyra Landon. And I do not believe that they were able to make it based on the attendees I can see here. But just in case Kyra's the one who called in, if you want to unmute, use star six. Okay, next up is Dwight Arnison. He is Dwight here. It's not appear that Dwight was able.
Yeah, hi, I am here. Great, great. I, I had already asked my questions earlier with, with regard to the budget and the excess funds that you were moving ahead to 24 and 2025. So only thing to add is, is that along with, with Bruce and Greg and Pete, Peter, with regard to Lake Maury, you know, we, we obviously need funds as quickly as possible to get a feasibility study done because of the fact that not only do we have a lot of homeowners around the lake who were unable to use the lake. the lake towards a lot of part of the summer, but we also have Lake Maury Resort on the south end and the Aloha Camps, both on the west side of the lake and on the north side, side of the lake, that if there is a continuation of the serious cyanobreak like we had this past summer, it will severely impact the economics of the town of Fairleigh and will possibly lead to the loss of quite a bit of business for Lake Maury Resort on the south end and the probability that the summer camps may not be able to open along the lake. So just, just a plea that there is a absolute necessary need for funds to get a feasibility study done as soon as possible. And as Bruce had mentioned earlier on, there is also the need for a treatment to be done as soon as possible so that we don't lose the summer 2023 season, which, again, would have a very, very severe economic impact upon the town of Fairleigh and upon all the residents that live around there, as well as all the boaters who come to fish in the lake as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie. Appreciate your comment. And last up on the folks who signed up ahead of time is Jared Carpenter, but I don't believe Jared was able to join us. Okay, so we have time for probably one or two additional comments. If anyone who was unable to sign up would like to voice comment, please feel free to raise your hand using the Raise Hand Teams function. Okay, not seeing any. I think we can move to the portion of the agenda where we will wrap up and discuss our next steps. So want to thank everybody for joining us today and to voice your comment. As I mentioned earlier, we will be compiling all of the public comment that we receive through this public hearing and the online questionnaire, as well as any additional written comments that we receive following the end of the public comment period, which closes November 22 at 4:00 p.m. So please take a visit to our Clean Water Board webpage to learn more about the budget and ways to comment if you're interested. Immediately following the close of the public comment period, we will be working to put together a responsiveness summary of public comment and working to respond to comments that we've received. That way, the Clean Water Board will reconvene on December 7th at their next Clean Water Board meeting. There will be details posted on the Clean Water Board webpage about that meeting, and we'll be sure to get announcements out to our stakeholder listeners. So we welcome folks to attend to learn about the outcomes of the public comment period. And at that board meeting, the Clean Water Board will be making their final budget recommendation, which will then later be folded into the, the governor's budget recommendation presented to the legislature in January, and then it will go through the legislative review process, hopefully on track to be authorized by the spring for implementation beginning July 1 of 2023. So that's where we're at in the overarching budget process and some of the near-term milestones. Just to reiterate, public comment period closes November 22nd, and the Clean Water Board will be reconvening on December 7th. Anything else that you would like to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, behalf of the other board members, I appreciate the thanks, but I do think that the board plays, it's a piece of the puzzle, but in my opinion, it's a small piece of the puzzle. The overwhelming majority of the work is done by dozens, if not hundreds, of dedicated state and municipal employees that are out there doing this work every day. So those are the ones that I really want to thank. We talk about millions of dollars. That translates into thousands of people's hours of work, hard work every day. So I think that we have, we're, we are in a position now with our waterways that we, you know, recognized seven years ago or more, you know, formally recognized in the law, that, that Vermont does not want to be in. And we're fighting our way out of that. And I think it's going to take us many more years to get to a state where we're happy with the, the state of the waterways in Vermont. So it is a long struggle, and people are spending thousands of hours. So I wanted to thank all the, the state and municipal employees that do this. And I do want to thank all of you for showing up and engaging and giving us your comments. I think that's a critical part of the process as well. I know that going into the 2023 legislative session, you know, we'll be thinking about how our programs are running right now. I do think that the Clean Water Board has a specific charge, and it's focused on recommending a budget each year. And then it kind of doesn't have direct oversight or direct interaction after a certain point, right? So we, we have a role, but it's not a comprehensive role. So I think, I know I'm being a little bit vague there, but hopefully we can build some of that into our responses to people's questions today to kind of clarify what the board can and cannot do, what the board should and should not do, based on our statutory authority. As a lifelong Vermonter, I'm always very concerned with overstepping any authority I'm given in any way. So I, I don't want to see the board overreaching. But we also need to do everything we can to fulfill our mission, particularly for lakes like Carmine and Maury that are seeing real short-term impacts from the conditions of those lakes. So thank you all for coming today, and thank you for, for sharing your perspectives. It is extremely helpful. And Secretary Moore, I don't know if you want to say anything as well?
Just would also add my thanks. The broad public engagement is integral to our ability to do this work. Obviously, Vermont is fortunate to have not only the, the lakes mentioned today, but, but more than 800 inland lakes and ponds, as well as thousands of miles of streams and rivers. And so it really takes a, a very broad approach to accomplish our goals, and public participation is an integral component. And so just thank you to all of you for making time, for engaging in this work, for sharing your priorities. And we, we look forward to, to reflecting, being able to reflect back to you based on what we've heard today and producing a final recommended budget in the coming weeks.
Thank you. With that, I think we, we can conclude today's Clean Water Budget public hearing. Thanks again, everyone, for taking the time. We'll be posting the minutes and a recording of the live session of this public hearing, if anyone wants to refer back to that in the future. Have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.